Good morning, councillors and all those who are present in the chamber and those watching online. I'd like to declare the meeting open at 9:32am on the 16th of October. I'd like to acknowledge the Kandamooka people, who are the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet. I'd also like to pay respect to their elders, past, present and emerging, and extend that respect to other Indigenous Australians who are present. I'd like to remind you all that this meeting is being recorded in audio and video as well as being livestreamed online. Councillors are reminded that parliamentary privilege does not extend to these chambers, as it does for state and federal parliamentarians, and you are reminded to be cognizant of this in any comment which you may make during the course of this meeting. I would also like to remind councillors to use the microphone when speaking and for any councillor or officers who are attending virtually to please use the mute button when not speaking. In the event of an evacuation, I would ask that you remain calm and follow my directions. The emergency exit is through the gallery doors on your left and down the stairwell to exit onto Bloomfield Street. All members of the public present at the meeting must, not without the prior approval of the chairperson, make any audio or video recording or take any photographs, remain quiet and not disrupt the meeting in any way. Not bring into the meeting any signs, placards or items that may cause a hazard or interfere with any person present. Be suitably dressed and turn all mobile devices to silent mode and leave the meeting to take any calls. As chairperson, it is my responsibility to warn a member of the public present at a meeting who is not complying with any of the requirements and may with or without such warning require the person to leave the meeting and not return for such period as the chairperson decides. This period may include future meetings. Moving on to agenda item number two, leave of absence. I've been advised that we have two councillors with a leave of absence today. That is councillor Boglari and councillor Gole. Councillors? Councillors, can I have a mover and seconder that councillor Wendy Boglari be permitted to participate in the meeting via teleconference? Moved by councillor Bishop, seconded by councillor Mackenzie. Put the motion. Councillor Rendles, do you have an indication? Thank you. That's councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself with councillor Gole and councillor Boglari. And councillor Gole being absent, yeah. In relation to councillor Gole, he is also seeking a leave of absence. Can I have a mover and a seconder that that leave of absence be granted? Moved by councillor Rendles, seconded by councillor Mitchell. Put the motion, those in favour. That is councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop, councillor Boglari, myself. With the exclusion obviously of councillor Gole. That motion is carried. Yeah. Moving to agenda item number three, which is the devotional segment. I'd now like to invite Pastor Sharon Rasmussen of Harvest City Church to leave the council in a brief devotional segment.
Thank you for the invitation. Just feel very excited to be here as always. And again, our church specifically prays for this city all the time. We love the Redlands, it's got to be the best place to live. And we just appreciate all those people who work in this city and we appreciate you all. I just really want to come with an attitude of gratitude, I guess, this morning. And the scripture that just came to my mind last week as I was thinking of being here. In the book of Philippians, chapter four, it's talking about, "Let us not be anxious about anything, but in everything, by prayer and by petition with thanksgiving, let our requests be known to God." And that the peace of God, which surpasses all understanding, guards our heart and guards our mind. And then it says, and continuing on, "Let us keep those things in mind, those things that are true, those things that are honourable, if anything is right, if anything is pure, if anything is pleasing, if anything is of good report, if there is anything of virtue or anything with any praise, let us meditate on these things." And, you know, we can find ourselves bogged down, I guess, from time to time. But let us just be mindful to come back to that place. There's always something good that we can think about, whether it be our family. You may love the position you hold even, be very passionate about it. Let's meditate on those things, those things that are pleasing to us, those things that are true, those things that are right, those things that are praiseworthy and those things that are of good report. So I'd just like to pray with thanksgiving this morning before we start the meeting. Father, we thank you for your word. We thank you that it is living and it is alive and is powerful and it can bring us life. And just as we read in this scripture, those things that are pure and of good report and praiseworthy. Lord, help us to remember these things as we go forward today and every other day as well. You're a good God, you're a faithful God, and so we bless your name. And I speak a blessing over this meeting today in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Rasmussen. Okay, councillors, I'm not aware of any condolences for today's meeting. All right, we progress. Agenda. Councillor Bishop.
Sorry, I just want to mention, I think councillor Boglari may have her microphone unmuted. I just want to...
Well, thank you.
Thank you. And agenda item number four, recognition of achievement. Do we have any councillors who'd like to present a recognition of achievement? No, not this month. All right, progressing to agenda item number five, which is receipt and confirmation of minutes. We now move on to the confirmation of the previous meeting's minutes. May I have a mover and a seconder that the meetings of the general meeting held on the 18th of September 2024 be confirmed? Sorry? Eighteenth of September? We're October. Yeah, we've moved into October now. Yeah, no, that's okay. Mover and a seconder, moved by councillor Bishop, seconded by councillor Mitchell. No items of correctness? No. All right, carrot, put the motion, those in favour. Councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Rendles, councillor Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop, councillor Boglari online and myself. And noting that councillor Gole is absent, motion is carried. Moving to agenda item number six, which is a declaration of prescribed conflict of interests and declarable conflict of interests. Councillors are reminded of their responsibilities in relation to a councillor's prescribed conflict of interest and declarable conflict of interest at a meeting. Details of these responsibilities are also outlined in the agenda. Please be reminded that all interests need to be declared at a statutory meeting of council. This means any prescribed or declarable conflict of interest relating to an item being discussed at a non-statutory meeting needs to be declared at the general or special meeting preceding the non-statutory meeting or workshop. A potential list of items to be discussed at all non-statutory meetings are made available to councillors with each workshop agenda before the preceding general meeting, so this can be achieved. These declarations can also be made at any time throughout the meeting. Does anyone need to raise any conflicts of interest? Yes, councillor Hughes?
Thank you. I have two to declare today for this meeting. Thank you, starting today on the general meeting, agenda item 15.1, which is the options to manage bushfire risk. The report for the agenda references 1,472 properties, one of which of these properties is owned by my daughter and son-in-law, Daniel and Carrie-Anne Britnall. I, councillor Tracy Hughes, declare that I have a declarable conflict of interest in relation to general meeting, agenda item 15.1, options to manage bushfire risk, and I am seeking approval to participate in all future statutory and non-statutory meetings. I have considered my position and am firmly of the opinion that I can participate in the discussion and vote on the matter in the public interest at both future statutory and non-statutory meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hughes. Councillor Bishop, you're just getting ready for the next bit. May I have a mover and seconder that councillor Tracy Hughes may participate in all future statutory meetings, including voting on the matter, non-statutory information meetings of council in relation to agenda item, sorry, item number 15.1, moved by councillor Bishop, seconded by councillor Tolty. Put the motion, those in favour. Councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Colley, Bishop, councillor Boglari online and myself, noting that councillor Gole is absent, the motion is carried.
Thank you, colleagues. Regarding the second declarable conflict regarding confidential item 20.1, which is the 2024/25 round of sponsorship programme, included on the agenda item 20.1 is the Brisbane Bayside South Indian Association, to whom I have been supporting and working with over the past two years as an advisor to their committee in preparation for our city's Dewali festivals. So I, councillor Tracy Hughes, declare that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 20.1, the 2024/25 Round One Sponsorship Programme at the general meeting of today, 16th of the 10th, 2024, which is item 20.1, which I've mentioned, the Bayside, sorry, Brisbane Bayside South Indian Association, to whom I have been supporting. And it is my belief that I will exclude myself from the meeting whilst this matter is being discussed and the vote is taken. That is my thoughts. I will remove myself from the room for that item. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hughes. So councillor Tracy Hughes will exclude herself while item 20.1 is being discussed. So moving to agenda item number seven, matters outstanding from the previous general meeting. The acting CEO will now give an update on the matters outstanding from previous general meetings. Thank you, acting CEO.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everybody. There are four outstanding items. The first is 7.1, the Draft Berkdale Community Precinct Local Government Infrastructure Designation Consultation Report. A report will come to a future general meeting of council. Item 7.2, council's programmes related to the Environmental Protection Biodiversity Act, response to a notice of motion. A report will come to a future meeting of council. Item 7.3, the expenses reimbursement and provision of facilities for councillors' policy. A report will be brought to the general meeting of council scheduled for the 20th of November 2024. Item 7.4, the indoor sports facilities planning. A report will come to a future meeting of council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Agenda item number eight, there is no merril minute for today's meeting. Agenda item number nine, we have not received any applications for public participation this month. It's very, very quiet this month. We now have agenda item number 10, petitions and presentations, and we have one petition for today's meeting. And that is going to be directed to councillor Boglari. It's a request to rebuild park on Crossley Drive at Wellington Point.
Thank you, May. The petition is from two 11-year-old girls that live close to Crossley Drive Park that have recently been destroyed and replaced with a seat, in their wording. "We go to school close to the park, we walk home and play at the park. Now at home, we are bored playing on devices because we don't have a park to play in." When they saw the fences going up, they thought they were going to get a revamp, but they were very disappointed to see that the park wasn't getting rebuilt. And they are now asking, because the community is devastated with the park being taken away, and they are now requesting this petition, sorry, for our park to be rebuilt. And they look forward to hearing from our response about rebuilding the park. The petition is of an operational nature and I ask that it be received and referred to the chief executive officer for consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Boglari. So can I have a seconder for the motion? Thank you, councillor Hughes. Putting motion, those in favour. Councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, Rendles. Councillor Tolty is currently absent, councillor Mackenzie in favour, councillor Hughes, councillor Colley, councillor Bishop, councillor Boglari online and myself. Okay, and if I can, and also myself. Noting that councillor Gole is absent. And councillor Boglari, can I just have a verbal and audio, for the audio, indication of your support for this motion?
Yes, I support it. And can I ask for future reference? I've been putting my hand up. Should I not put my hand up? I should actually verbally reply, just for the rest of the meeting?
Yeah, I've been seeing your hand online, but for recording purposes, I've just been told we'll need an audio.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I'll now ask for the audio after we go around the room.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. That motion is carried. I've not been advised that we have any presentations this month. Moving to agenda item number 11, I've not been advised of any motion to alter the order of business. Agenda item number 12, which is reports to council, reports from the office of the CEO. There are no reports from the office for this month. So now we move into the heavy part of the meeting. And just a reminder to all councillors, some of these topics are very topical and because they're going to be lengthy, I ask that everyone respect standing orders and that everyone adheres to time. So I think we'll work really smoothly if we can adhere to time, make our points really succinct in our questions. I'd appreciate if we can have speakers for and against in a clear delineation and then move to questions after we complete that process. So I'll call for questions at the end of that. We've had some confusion previously. All right, so agenda item number 13.1, which was a late report. It was a September 2024 monthly financial report. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Moved by councillor Bishop, seconded by councillor Mitchell. Councillor Bishop, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't believe I need to speak to the motion. I think it's all in the report. But given that it was a late report, it might just be worthwhile, if I could, through the chair, to just refer to our chief financial officer for a brief overview. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bishop. Chief financial officer, are you prepared to speak? Thank you.
Thank you. And through you, Chair, as we can see in the report itself, in section one, the executive summary. So I'm not sure if we're going to bring that up on the screen, but I will keep talking to the report. Overall, our performance continues to track well so early in the financial year. So this is the first quarter now of the year complete. As you can see here, we have an operating surplus year-to-date of $8.4 million, which is favourable to budget by 5% or $437,000. We continue to either meet or exceed all measures of financial sustainability except for the asset sustainability ratio. And again, that is due to the timing of delivery of infrastructure works. And all indications are that we will meet that target as we work through the financial year. Similar to July and August, we do see the unfavorable variance to budget in the recurrent revenue due to the lower-than-expected bog water consumption. But we also have that corresponding reduction in expenditures, so it does tend to net itself out. And I just wanted to note and call attention to, as we mentioned in August, the capital carryovers are now also in the annual revised budget figures. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, CFO. If I can just move to, are there any speakers against? No, then I'll open up for questions. Councillor Bishop?
Yes, just wondering if we could have verbal clarification on what that carryover amount was, if you've got that to hand?
Thank you councillor, it was twenty two million dollars.
Thank you, thanks very much. Nothing further from me.
Nothing further, all right, I put the motion, those in favour. Thank you councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, Rendles, Talty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colly, Bishop and myself, councillor Boglari.
Aye.
That's a confirmation from councillor Bishop and noting, sorry councillor Boglari, and noting that councillor Gola is absent for the meeting, that motion is carried. Moving to agenda item number thirteen point two, which is the annual financial statements for twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Mitchell, a second, councillor Hughes. Councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, this item is presenting the, importantly, the audited as true and fair council financial statements for the last financial year, ordered by the Queensland Audit Office. And also includes a sustainability statement. And this is ahead of the annual report that we're seeking to improve later today. Importantly, it's not just Redlands City Council itself, but also the controlled entities, Redlands Water and also Redlands Investment Corporation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell, are there any speakers against? No, any questions? Councillor Bishop?
Yes, first of all, thank you to officers for time to discuss certain matters. I just, one question I had with regards to on page twenty three was the fixed value asset valuation, which was a one third comprehensive revaluation of infrastructure roads and one third of water and wastewater assets to the order of one hundred and seventy four million dollars with indexation of the others. Just wondering for clarification, how often that happens, how regularly in cycle terms that happens? If I could?
CFO?
Thank you, and through you, Chair, the comprehensive revaluation is on a five year cyclical, cyclical, I cannot get that word, at the cyclical basis for that comprehensive revaluation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, any other questions? Councillor Hughes?
Thank you, and I'll go pretty much right to the last page of the report, which is page twenty eight. And we talk here about the landfill remediation separate charge. And just seeking through, through yourself, through the chairs, the CFO, regarding that landfill remediation, obviously we've got a lot of works and I've always got my eyes on, on that, that we've now got almost seventeen million there in that, on that line item there, if you'd like to speak to that. Thanks CFO.
Thank you, and through you, Chair, councillor Hughes, so we do have, we have been collecting that money. There are significant works upcoming in the future, which we will be allocating that funding to. And again, it's a matter of timing on delivering on those various aspects of, of the works that need to be done for the landfill remediation.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mackenzie.
Thank you, and through you, Chair, just wondering if the CEO can just give us a quick overview of the operating revenue, operating expenses, what contributed to that loss? And the ratio that we're supposed to have according, the best ratio we're supposed to have according to state legislation in comparison to our net result, which is obviously very good. But that operating result is higher than what we expected.
Thank you CFO.
Thank you, Chair, and through, through you for councillor Mackenzie. If I just start with you mentioned about our current expenses and revenue. So we, if I touch on, I think it's page three of the actual document itself, where we have the statement of comprehensive income, which we may also have heard called previously, income statement or profit and loss statement. And this statement touches on, well, sorry, it actually reflects the operations of council being the revenue and expenditure transactions that occur through the financial year. And as councillor Mitchell touched on, it does reflect both the council transactions plus the consolidated transactions, which include our controlled entities as well. So we have received revenue of four hundred and thirty nine million dollars for the year. And that just includes items such as the general rates, things like animal registration fees, for example, wheelie bin revenue and the Commonwealth Federal Financial Assistance Grant. We can see that we also have incurred expenditure of the year of three hundred and ninety seven million dollars. And again, that encompasses supplier payments, payments made for salaries, for wages to our employees, things like electricity cost appreciation and the purchase of bulk water from SEQ water to supply our community. The net result here shows that that's the difference between the, all of the revenue and the expenditure. And that's a forty one point six million dollar improvement to the community equity position or that total value of, of the financial value of council to the community. So that's the recurrent revenue and expenditure. I believe the ratio that you're speaking to.
Sorry, just, no, the recurrent is, if we go back up, the, sorry, the operational is the recurrent, which is the total recurrent revenue and the total recurrent expenses. And there's a loss there of thirty six odd million dollars.
From an operating deficit perspective, yes. So the operating, and you can, the operating deficit itself is made up of a number of one off transactions that have occurred through the financial year. And this includes the timing of when we receive the financial assistance grant from the federal government. We fully expect and we always have typically received that in the financial year, but that payment came through on the second of July. It also includes additional adjustments we had to make related to the landfill remediation for duty halt, the change of scope of works there. And there was also reflecting the COSIC class action settlement following the High Court determination. They were the main factors that resulted in, in that operating deficit for twenty three, twenty four.
Thank you, any other questions? Councillor Rendles?
Please, please bear with me when we work through these, I'll take it sequentially. So if we look at page six of the audit report, I have a, I have a, I have a questionary clarification of the the valuation of property, plant and equipment. It would appear that we may have undervalued that. It's this, it's, it's page nine, two audit conclusions. My question is, if we, if we have undervalued the assets, does that impact our allocations for depreciation and replacement? I'm happy to put that on notice.
I think through you, Chair councillor Rendles, we do have that audited, audited position for all of how we value our property, plant and equipment every year. And so with the revaluations, that will also take into account capital works which have been completed and are now assets on the books, so to speak. So we'll, we'll see the uplift in asset valuation from there. Plus with the actual valuations themselves, we know that we've had some significant increases in construction type costs, which can also impact the valuation of our assets year to year. But we do have that audited position on the value of our property, plant and equipment every year. And as we said, have that cyclical comprehensive revaluation and that agreed indexation for the other classes year on year. Does that answer?
May I provide a, ask a follow up question, Madam Chair?
Yes councillor Rendles.
I've, I've pulled that out because it's noted in that risk chart up above as one of the areas of significant risk. Also in relation to that risk chart, it identifies three areas of risk, numbered one, two and three. Number one, valuation property, plant and equipment is on page nine. Number three.
Councillor Rendles, can I just check what page you're on?
I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the, the pagination as per the attachment. It's, it's the late item external auditor report dated eighteenth of September. I've moved from page, I've moved from page nine, which is in your, in your diligent boards. It's page nine of thirty one. In, in the.
Just checking with this, we've just got some confusion. I'm just one, I'm just wondering, are you, are you in the previous report? Are you in, are you in thirteen point two?
I'm in the one that was in the current books as late item external auditor report. Yeah, that, that was a separate attachment, it's not in the body of the agenda, am I looking at the right one?
That's late item eleven point one.
Late item eleven point one.
I think, I think councillor Rendles, you're in thirteen point.
You're in the audit page councillor.
We'll just get some clarification.
My apologies, I'm looking at the audit committee report that I'll pass on these comments to, to the CFOs so that they may be considered in that meeting.
Thank you councillor Rendles. Councillor Bishop?
Yeah, mine's just a very simple clarification of the point that on the very last page of the report, which is the long term financial sustainability statement, just acknowledging that that is looking from a point in time back at the financial adoption of this annual report. And the projection going forward is also based on this point of time. It's not inclusive of things such as the local government infrastructure plan, which we will look at a later point in this report. So it's a point in time, just want to clarify that.
That's correct. Thank you councillor Bishop.
Sorry, thanks.
Councillor Mitchell, would you like to sum up?
No, comfortable with the discussion, ma'am.
Thank you, right. I put the motion, those in favour, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Rendles, Talty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colly, Bishop and myself, councillor Boglari, looking for an audio confirmation?
Aye.
Thank you. Noting that councillor Gola is absent, that motion is carried. Now we move to agenda item number thirteen point three, which is the annual community financial report for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Mackenzie. Councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. And the, the questions and the discussion in the last item probably indicate how important this, this item is. This is the annual community financial report. So while there's massive detail that sits behind this document through the financial reports and other, other documents, this is a summary. It's high level, it's intended for easy consumption out in the community. And in, and I very much appreciate the graphs and tables that, that bring it to life for me. So thi- this is for the community's reference. So I'll say two things to the community. If there are further questions, then council is always open to you. And please come in and look at the devil that is always in the detail, if that's of your interest. But also if you're comfortable with what's there, but you would have any suggestions on how it can be even more easily presented to you out there in the community to assist in that comfort and transparency, then please let us know about that too. But this is the community's report that reflects the annual financial statements of council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Mitchell, do I have any speakers against? Any questions? Councillor Hughes?
Thank you, and interesting enough, thank you councillor Mitchell, just following on. I'd like to go to Sarah if we can, and it's page eighteen, sorry, thirteen of the report, thanks. And, and of that graph, when we're talking to income, where did the money come from? Through the chair, if I could go to our chief financial officer. I'm looking at this graph and it's got a total income of, in the blue, have we got it on the screen yet? Thanks Sarah.
It's thirteen.
Page thirteen. Oh, sorry, that's it.
So just to clarify, page sixty three of the agenda.
Yeah, my apologies, so many different page numbers. On, on this graph that was just there, we've got on the top seventy percent, where did income, where did the money come from, seventy percent rates, levies and charges. There it is, in the blue, seventy percent. So when, when our residents are looking at that graph, they're looking at that and seeing seventy percent of, of that income, where did the money come from? But as we've just seen in our monthly reports, when we go to the graph in our monthly reports, we actually see our rates and charges come in at thirty one percent. So CFO, just with that comparison to our community, to understand why they're looking at two different, almost similar graphs, similar color, similar wording, but they're actually representing different things throughout the year and then once a year it changes.
Thank you CFO.
Thank you Chair, and through you, thank you councillor Hughes and for identifying, you know, the similarity in the, in the colors, get the difference in how they're portrayed. And I think that fundamentally does come down to the different uses of the report. As we mentioned, we have the monthly report, which is that more granular level of the operations of council. Whereas the community financial report reflects the overall annual financial statements and follows, it, it really is translating the financial statements and the layout of the financial statements in this lens. And through how we do display in the financial statements, the rates, levies and charges essentially, those items which are on the rates notice for our rate payers are aggregated on the statement itself, that comprehensive income statement. And in the notes to the account, we split them out separately. But I do want to appreciate that that is getting quite into the end of the document. It's good feedback, thank you, and definitely something that we will take into account for how we display that in our next financial, financial year publication.
Thank you. And, and further going two pages, Sarah, if we could. Two pages over and at the bottom of the page, because I'm not sure what page number.
Seven of the report.
What were the major sources of cash in and cash out? Is it the bottom of the page, that might be one more page over, Sarah?
It's, it's page nine of the report actually.
Thank you. Because I've, I've got the annual report, that, that's it. At the second, the, the second bottom line of that bottom graph, it says repayment of debt. And when we blow that, those numbers up, the repayment of debt this year, three point nine two million. But I note last year, the repayment of debt, debt seven point nine five, that's a significant drop when we're paying back our debt and when we know, and our, our community know that we, we have borrowed year on year on year. So I'd just like to understand that difference, thank you.
Thank you CFO.
Thank you, and through you, Chair councillor Hughes, that largely reflects the, the fact that we had a debt that we had, a loan that we had entered into in twenty sixteen for six years and the extinguishment of that loan with the last payment, debt servicing payment of, of that being roughly four point, in the circa of four point five or four point nine million dollars. And that's why we see that, that difference is because in twenty two, twenty three, we extinguished that debt that was a six year loan term.
And that's a good news story for the community, thank you so much.
Thank you councillor Hughes, councillor Rendles, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, that I bring your attention to, it is very confusing. It's page three of the report that will go to the community, page eighty one of the general report or page sixty. Page eighty-one of the general report or page sixty-one, if you're looking at your diligent boards. That's, um, that is, that is, it is too hard. But it's the, if you look at the third, go back up, go back up, go back up. If you look at the, um, third row there, that, um, relative to all the other performance targets which we're exceeding, we're sitting below our operating surplus ratio by just over ten, ten percent. This ties into, um, the consolidated order report and what I was discussing earlier. And within the context of, you know, people feeling the cost of living pressures and, you know, I can get frequent requests, um, in terms of what is council doing? What, what more can we do in reducing the cost to residents for fees and charges? But my looking at that figure doesn't suggest that we can do too much.
CFO?
Thank you. And through, through you Chair, thank you councillor Endles for the question. We touched on earlier the drivers behind this year's, um, operating deficit, which you can see translated to the ratio there. And, and they were those one-off adjustments that went through the, went through the accounts. We do, um, tend to have, um, we do tend to budget that, that, um, we do have an operating surplus greater than zero percent. And then when we do have results like this, um, they are due to, as I mentioned, the one-off adjustments that went through this financial, this financial year.
Thank you. Any, thank you. Any other questions? No. Councillor Mitchell, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, mayor. And only to say, the, um, you know, the questions from, uh, the councillors who have been embedded in, in discussions around this for a long time just kind of reflect the importance of the information and how in these community reports, um, you know, we can always seek to improve that, that quality of information and the ease of, um, of its presentation. So thanks councillors for the discussion.
Here, here. All right. Thank you. I put the motion. Those in favour, councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, Endles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself. Councillor Boglari seeking a verbal confirmation?
Aye.
Thank you. And noting that councillor Goley is absent, that motion is carried. Moving to agenda item number thirteen point four, which is the adoption of the annual report for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Councillors, there have been some minor changes and they are now displayed on the screen. There's new attachment. Do I have a mover? Can councillor Bishop, thank you, seconded. Councillor Mitchell? Councillor Bishop, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, mayor. In doing so, um, we'd like to just acknowledge the extreme level of work across the entire organisation for the consolidation of and preparation of this, uh, work. Um, also, um, not the least of which is, you know, with QAO overseeing and a lot of great reports back from them. Just acknowledging that this is again a back, back looking consolidation of the adoption of the annual report. And in it, it also describes so many of the touchpoints of council and what officers do on behalf of our community. And I do commend the organisation and I'm sure councillors all do the same. It is a comprehensive, um, body of work and takes a great deal of time, especially on the back of preparation of our budget. So thank you to the team. And, um, uh, with that, I'll just, yeah, move the motion and thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers against? Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? So the amendments should be on the screen now. So it's the amendment of hectares, I think. I think it was around four and a half thousand. It's been changed to six and a half thousand hectares. And those figures have, have, they were, they were checked after that query of four and a half. They were checked and amended to the correct six and a half thousand hectares. All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Councillor Endles?
That, um, ref- echoing some of the other, other comments that have been made. I think, I think the, um, council officers have done a stellar job on, on this report. And I would highlight to the community as they go through the report that this is no, by no means a comprehensive outline of all the projects that the council's been engaged in. And I think it should, should be seen as a little bit of a highlights. Um, and it also should be seen as a positive, a positive indication of the work that's, um, council's doing. And I also draw to the attention of the community under the area of catalysts that the significant commitment that council has already made towards cost of living adjustments for our community.
Thank you. All right. I, um, councillor Hughes?
Thank you Chair. Were there, there were other questions or, yeah, we're still on questions? Oh, okay.
Councillor Hughes?
I thought everybody would be having their, 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 um, hand up. Uh, my, my apologies. Uh, again, that just the numbers are too hard. I've got on page, uh, page twenty-three, which was the natural environment performance measures. And through you, through yourself to, um, our Ms Sherry Clark, thank you, if I could. There was a paragraph there with the fortnightly green waste. And I had sought some clarification because I found that paragraph really difficult. It's dot point five at the bo- at the bottom of the page. When we get to the right page number, page twenty-three? Thank you very much. Can you see, see that, Ms Clark?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just, when I read that paragraph, it, it just seemed to throw me a little bit. Can you just elaborate a little bit more on that one? Thanks.
Through you, uh, Chair, and thank you councillor Hughes for the question. It's providing a status on our performance in the waste management area. And specifically it's, uh, reporting on an increase in the number of residences that have accessed, uh, green waste bins. And, uh, and through various measures in the year, that's increased by nineteen hundred. It's also outlining, uh, the amount of waste that is collected per household and breaking that down by components, including recycling and identifying the fact that whilst, um, Redlands community has, um, has achieved some improvements in this space, we still have a ways to go before we can meet the twenty twenty-five target. Thank you councillor.
Thank you. Councillor?
Thank you Chair. So it, just when you, you read that, that, the, the numbers are up. We've got more, uh, green waste bins in the community and we've done a great job in getting those bins out to our community. But that has not been offset by a reduction in the green waste. Is, is that what we're saying? That, that's how I'm, I'm understanding it, that, that's what you're saying. So even while we think the numbers are up, so we would presume that our waste, green waste management is, is actually, would be decreased. That's not the case.
Uh, through you Chair, councillor Hughes, we are trending in the right direction. So, uh, uh, overall, there is a decrease in household waste. But we still not have achieved the target. Um, but there has been an increase in green waste collection.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Boglari, you have a question?
Probably not just, um, so much a question, but just to thank the officers because this is a summary of, um, a lot of work over, um, the year. And I did have, even though when it comes together, we've already done it all, um, I did have some questions. I just want to thank them for answering them prior to the meeting. But I would just want to thank them for the, um, standard of the report. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Boglari. Councillor Mitchell?
Thank you, mayor. A practical question on behalf of the community again. I mean, it, it, the la- lack of some discussion belies the importance of this important document and how incredible, uh, it is. It's really the, it's the annual schoolbook. You know, we know how much we value those and look back on them. So because there is a lot of, uh, detail and people might want to take their time reading through it, um, and not everyone's going to want to look at that online. Are there any printed copies of this available to, to the public? Or can they access them somewhere?
Through you Madam Mayor. Thank you councillor Mitchell for the question. We have, uh, I think four years ago stopped the printing of, um, annual reports. Um, however, I think it's probably a good idea to print some that can go into the libraries so that, um, people can access those. And, uh, and we'll take that on board and arrange for that to happen.
Yeah, I, I think that's a sensible suggestion. I know, um, there, there is, it really is a great story in here and, uh, I'm sure it will both a source of pride for the community, but also fair enough if they want to come back and ask some questions. Taking their time in the library, grabbing a cup of coffee and going through it would be a useful thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, just, I'll just make a comment as well. Um, I know it's been a difficult first six months with lots of issues to work our way through. So I really do, um, add my thanks, uh, as do other, as do the councillors in, to staff and to the councillors for casting eagle eyes over this document and picking up even the smallest of corrections. So that is a wonderful thing to have multiple sets of eyes going over the document. Thank you to the staff for making this really palatable with a focus really particularly on that community interface. For anyone watching online, I second the comments in relation to encouraging community members to have a good look at it. And if they have any questions, reach out to the organisation or to visional councillors to, to ask any questions so greater understanding is, I guess, borne out across, uh, our LGA. Wonderful document. Thank you very much for all the input. Thank you acting CEO for the part you've played most recently, um, not only in your previous role, but in an acting capacity as well. Um, well done to everyone to get this out on time and to be such a good document as a, as a community interface. Councillor Bishop, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, yes, and just also acknowledging with the respect to the officers and the, thanks to them, there's been some transition in teams and different people wearing different hats. And I think that makes it even more, um, uh, uh, of a diligent and thorough encapsulation of the great work that does continue. Noting that the green waste that was raised by councillor Hughes does represent an increase. But what is an increase of is people doing the right thing. And I think that programme of encouraging green waste collection is actually a very merit worthy process. And I think if people are doing the right thing, then hopefully they'll be more compliant down the track, which is a good thing. Also just noting again that this is a point in time, looking back. Um, there are some big issues coming up, uh, with landfill remediation and various other things, not to mention our LGP. But, um, yeah, thank you very much for all the great work, all the very best. Thanks for the officers.
Thank you councillor Bishop. I now put the motion. Those in favour? That's councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Endles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself seeking a verbal confirmation. Councillor Boglari?
Aye.
And noting that councillor Goley is absent, that motion is carried. We now move on to agenda item number thirteen point five, the Audit and Risk Management Committee, uh, report from the twenty-second of August, reports from the twenty-second of August and nineteenth of September, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Councillor Boglari?
Thank you.
And a second, uh, councillor Mitchell? Councillor Boglari, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, yes, thank you, because, um, I find this work extremely interesting and valuable. Um, the audit committee report highlights the work of, um, this particular committee in supporting our corporate governance responsibilities. Um, the committee has both external and internal members, which you can tell in this report because there are those, um, external reports. And they were quite detailed, large reports at our last committee. Um, even though these are a requirement by the Local Government Act, I feel our council officers actually, um, put in a great deal of work to ensure that transparency and accountability, um, which is, um, necessary under the act. The key highlights from our recent meeting on the twenty, on August twenty-second and September the nineteenth include a review of the draft and final financial statements for twenty-three, twenty-four, ensuring compliance with accounting standards prior to submission to the QAO, updates on our annual ethics and integrity programme to promote transparency and ethical conduct, the Queensland Audits Office closing report on the external re-audit and findings, a detailed review of our cybersecurity programmes to mitigate risks and details on asset data audit, um, recommendations and pro- process on our digital transformation programme. As previously mentioned by councillor Endles, there was also the external audit report. And on page six, um, councillor Endles mentioned the revaluation of assets to a hundred and forty-six point eight million. Um, this was in line with the rises and this movement was found to be consistent. Page six, um, page seven of that report also mentions our current financial outlooks. And I was just going to read this because it's interesting. Um, current financial outlook and cost escalations have meant that council might have to make strategic decisions to pause, discontinue some aspects of its capital work programme. The, this increases the risk that costs incurred today on some capital projects may need to be considered for impairment. I just wanted to highlight that because it just shows how the rising costs are really impacting council, like every other business in town. Um, it is also impacting council and going forward with our budget deliberations. We really need to look at that long-term financial outlook. Um, page ten, um, it concerns risks assessed, um, with access to various, um, parts of council through, through computers and emails and everything. And this risk has been assessed and due to this, council has reduced privileged users. This report has a lot of valuable information and is certainly well worth a read for everybody. I'd like to highlight that offices presented on all these items and they need to be recognised, not just for their high level of detail they put in the report, but the work that goes behind them. Like when a risk to council is identified, they action it, like reducing those privileged users. And I think, um, in regards to our digital transformation programme and the cybersecurity areas, staff really are ensuring that our council has the latest, most effective and efficient systems for not only improved productivity, but they're also ensuring councillors safe from cyber risks. And we have seen lately on the news, many other councils have been, um, I was going to say damaged, you know, reputationally, but also financially. So I just feel our staff are leading in these areas and they need to be recognised for this work, which perhaps because it's behind the scenes, they don't always get that recognition. Um, they are always reducing risks to council, um, as a constant priority. Additionally, you will notice within these minutes that the audit committee minutes from these meetings now provide much more detailed insight into the discussions of our confidential meetings. And I felt this was necessary due to the importance of the content of what is discussed in these meetings. This greater transparency is something that I've been passionate about and asked for a number of years to provide this granularity and transparency. Because though councillors get the reports, the ca- community doesn't. Um, now being a representative on the committee and with full support of the mayor, um, I'm very satisfied that we have, um, an increase in this transparency and we've achieved this for the community. And I just wanted to highlight that increased transparency as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Boglari. Are there any speakers against? Any questions or comments? Councillor Bishop?
My question was to councillor Boglari. The first point she mentioned was with regards to future looking. I just want to, I could not find that page that you were referring to about managing our future considerations about, um, needing to review some of those. I'll, I'll follow up off, offline. Don't worry. I'll do it later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Councillor Boglari, do you have anything further to say?
No, just a big thank you to all the officers that put the work in to those reports. I mean, I think the last lot of reports took me nearly four hours to get through on my first run. And that's a lot of work that these officers are doing. And that's a lot of work that these officers are doing. And they need some acknowledgement because it is reducing the risks strategically, financially, socially, it's reducing all the risks to council due to their work. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I second the comments that you made. The work being done is very prohibitive, very effective, and anything to reduce our risk to our organisation and therefore the community is to be supported wholeheartedly. I now put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, councillor Rendles? Okay, so councillor Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Tolty, councillor Mackenzie, councillor Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself, seeking an audio. Councillor Boglari?
Aye.
Confirming councillor Boglari's voting in favour, noting that councillor Goley is absent. Those against? Councillor Rendles. The motion is carried. Moving on to agenda item number 13.6, minor amendments to the operational plan 2024 to 2025. Do I have a mover for the officers' recommendation? Councillor Tolty, seconded by councillor Bishop. Councillor Tolty, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Now, this is just a minor amendment to ensure that our documents meet the legislation that they feed into. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speakers against? Any questions or comments? Thank you. Anything further to add, councillor Tolty?
No, it's in the report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself, seeking an audio. Thank you, councillor Boglari, in the affirmative, noting that councillor Goley is absent. The motion is carried. Moving to agenda item number 13.7, which is review of the delegations of the chief executive officer. Do I have a mover for the officers' recommendation? Thank you, councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Bishop. Councillor Mitchell, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. The CEO has important delegations of power to allow the business of council to keep running efficiently and effectively and in a timely fashion for the community. Otherwise, we would be bogged down and nothing would happen. These delegations are, they're all important and they're reviewed annually. That's an obligation under the Local Government Act. And this report highlights some of the new or amended powers to the CEO and that the, all the powers have been reviewed and analysed or questioned by councillors on the community's behalf. My understanding is that there are no significant changes to previous delegations. So in that way, it is routine. But underneath the routine are these crucial and very important delegations that are very serious and we take the review seriously every year. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mitchell. Any speakers against? Any questions or comments? Councillor Bishop?
Yeah, just acknowledging councillor Mitchell's very succinct acknowledgement of the work and the requirement to align with other levels of government and their plans. One of the questions that was asked was just to make sure that any changes, there's no changes that are related to discretionary factors in relation to this plan. It is actually to do with more with compliance and just general operational matters, just to have that clarified from whoever might be the most appropriate officer, CEO maybe?
Through you, through you, Madam Mayor. To councillor Bishop, you're correct in your assumption there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mitchell, anything further you want to add? No? I now put, thank you, I now put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself, seeking an-
Aye.
Thank you, councillor Boglari, in the affirmative, noting that councillor Goley is away. Motion is carried. Moving to agenda item number 13.8, which is the Redland City Council meeting schedule for 2025. Councillors, we do have an amendment which changes one of the meeting dates from April 16th to April 30th, taking into account public holidays that week. Sorry, what was that? Oh, sorry, the 23rd to the 30th. Thank you. Do I have a mover for that motion? Councillor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Bishop. Councillor Mackenzie, do you have anything to say in relation to the motion?
Just that it's a statutory requirement that we adopt a meeting schedule and this will be our meeting schedule for next year. And we've moved the April 23rd to the April 30th due to the 23rd being completely surrounded by a number of public holidays, which puts just the organisation offices under probably a little bit too much constraint and pressure to get that agenda and adequately answer any questions that councillors may have. So that was the reason for the move to the 30th.
Thank you. Are there any speakers against? Any comments or questions? I now put the motion. Those in favour? Councillors Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, oh, sorry, no, councillors Mackenzie, Colley, Bishop, myself, seeking an audio. Councillor Boglari?
Aye.
That's in the affirmative. Those against? Councillor Hughes, noting also that councillor Goley is absent. The motion is carried. Moving to agenda item number 13.9, which is the investigations policy, which is a statutory update. Do I have a mover for the officers' recommendation? Councillor Tolty, seconded by councillor Mackenzie. Councillor Tolty, would you like to speak to the motion?
Again, Mayor, this is a policy which is recommended under the state government protocols to have clear written up procedures in relation to complaints. And this adopts the recommended procedures as put forward by the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Any speakers against? Any questions or comments? Councillor Bishop?
Just in discussion that the formatting associated with what is proposed by the Local Government Act and the subsequent changes may require some future adjustments to come in line with council's normal process of how we would format our documents. So there may be some other changes coming to us at a future time, but the recommendation from the officers is to adopt at this moment and substantively accept those various matters that have been brought up. And I think, I think everyone's of the agreement that that is the proper thing to do now. And if there are subsequent changes, that they should come back. And if there are any discrepancies that need to be brought to council's attention, I'm sure that will either be done through a general meeting or the proper process. But thank you.
Thank you very much for that comment. Councillor Bishop? Any other questions or comments? All right, and now, sorry, councillor Tolty, do you have anything extra to say?
Oh, no, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now put the motion. Those in favour? Councillors Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop, seeking a-
Aye.
Confirmation from councillor Boglari and myself, noting that councillor Goley is absent, the motion is carried. All right, agenda item number 14, which is advocacy major projects in economic development. We don't have any reports this month. Moving to agenda item number 15, which is reports from community and customer services. 15.1 is the options to manage bushfire risk on properties with vegetation protected by a covenant or condition, building envelopes. Do I have a mover for the motion? Councillor Tolty?
I would actually like to propose that we leave this lay on the table, Madam Mayor. I'll be guided by councillors, but it's been quite a difficult process to get an agreed motion. And I think, and I don't have an alternate motion to put up and I don't believe the current motion will pass, but this is a really important matter. So I would like to suggest that we either leave it lay on the table and then bring 15.1 back in at the end of the meeting after confidential, or that we leave it lay on the table until the next meeting.
Thank you. I'll just go to councillor Boglari has her hand up. I'll take that question first and then come back. Councillor Boglari?
I was just going to say, I also have questions about any alternate motion, so I was happy to have it lay on the table so we can have further discussion.
Okay, sorry, councillor Hughes and then Bishop?
Just seeking clarity, thank you through the chair. If we lay on the table the report, obviously the report can't be changed, nor the amendment, sorry, the recommendation, it would just be exactly the same in this timeline, but picking up the same report, same recommendations. But if we remove the item from the agenda and bring it back at a future meeting, what's the, what is the difference to that? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to councillor Hughes. If it lies on the table, the content of the report cannot be changed. However, if it is deferred for a subsequent meeting, the content of the report can be changed. As with the recommendations, council can make any changes to recommendations on the floor. So the recommendations that are currently in the report or if councillor Tolty, for example, has an alternate motion, that can be raised later on once there's more information. But the content of the report cannot be changed.
Nor the officers' recommendation.
No, the recommendations can't be changed, councillor Hughes, but-
That's what I thought.
But the motion that a councillor can put forward, an alternative or amended motion, according to-
We can do that by laying on the table and or removing it to a further meeting.
That's correct.
So there's not a lot of difference in the two options.
Well, the difference is in the body of the report, there may be certain more information that might come to, come to hand. So the report may be able to be changed if you defer it, but if you lay it on the table, the report is as it is.
Thank you.
Councillor Tolty?
Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we leave it lay on the table for consideration at the end of this meeting and then a further motion can at that time be put to either further leave it until the next meeting or, as councillor Hughes has suggested, defer it to the next meeting. Or we may be able to finalise it today, which obviously would be preferable, if we can, you know, get through it. But I don't believe it this time. I don't have a, I don't have a worded motion that I can put up in good conscience. And I have been working with the officers to try to get a simple, straightforward guidance for residents that reflects the state legislation and concerns locally. And it's just, you know, as has always been the case, this is a very difficult thing to put a guideline on. And we're looking for best practice out of this, as advised under the Royal Commission into fire management, vegetation management. So this is really important to get right and we'll, and so I just think we do need more time, whether we can close it off today or not, I think we could possibly decide later in the day, but I don't believe it's ready to be discussed right now. So I'll be guided by councillors, but I'd like to move a motion that we leave it lay on the table until after confidential today and then we can further decide whether we proceed with it today or we make another motion.
All right, thank you. Councillor Bishop?
Yeah, there's a, just in relation to that proposal, I've got a couple of questions. One is, what is the information that councillor Tolty is aware of that will make a difference between now, when we've got the matter before us, and the end of the meeting? I'm not quite sure what that is. And secondly, if we, a question to officers, if this matter is to lie on the table, I understand that it's to come in line with requirements out of the findings from the substantive report, the, that has, the Royal Commission that's taken place. I think officers have done a mighty job in doing that. Is there a concern about timeframe? Because I think what we're looking to do with this report is give some clarity and state that council has a position and that adopted position, which we've discussed, I think is really important. So I'm just interested in, A, what's councillor Tolty's version of-
As I just said, Madam Mayor, the wording's not right yet and we don't want to be wordsmithing it right now, so I'm suggesting that we leave it to later.
Does that relate, sorry, just clarification, does that relate to the motion that you sent through just before the meeting? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, righty, yeah.
All right, thank you. In relation to part B of your-
Yes.
-question, which was a-
Is there a timing issue that is of concern?
No. Not between now and the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
Sorry, yeah, no, there's no timing issue in relation to implementing that.
Thank you. Councillor Colley, did you have your hand up?
I was going to second councillor Tolty's.
Okay. Thank you. Because it's a procedural motion, we don't need a seconder, so I think I'll just move on and we'll put the motion. Oh, sorry, sorry, before I forget, councillor Boglari has her hand up.
Yep, sorry. There was a lot of discussion on this on Monday and there's obviously been a lot of discussion since then. I'm uncomfortable with us trying to wordsmith something during the meeting because, number one, I'm going to be trying to concentrate on the rest of this meeting. I'd rather us defer it to another meeting rather than trying to wordsmith it now. Or we could just put the officers' recommendation and see how it goes.
Madam Chair, I have a motion on the floor. Can we vote on it, please?
All right, so-
Okay. Can I read what's the motion? It's to do it now.
Thank you. Councillor Tolty, can you, for clarity for everyone, can you repeat the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm suggesting that we leave the current matter of 15.1 lay on the table to be brought back at the end of this meeting today, after you have had time in your confidential discussions to go through other matters. And then, at that time, if councillors are not comfortable with a motion being put today, there's further scope to again defer to the next meeting or withdraw the item today and bring it back to a future meeting. All I'm suggesting is for the moment, we delay 15.1 to the end of today's agenda.
All right, thank you. So we don't require, we don't require a seconder, so I now put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, sorry, Hughes, Colley, councillor Bishop, councillor Boglari, seeking a confirmation, seeking an audio? That's a confirmation, thank you. And myself, noting that councillor Goley is absent, the motion is carried. Moving on to agenda item number 16, reports from infrastructure operations. 16.1 is the Greenavate Non-Executive Director Report. Do I have a mover for the officers' recommendation? Thank you, councillor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Mitchell. Councillor Mackenzie, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Greenavate's obviously a wonderful collaboration between us, Logan and Ipswich Council. And Greenavate is moving into that stage where we've, the interim CEOs and directors are now stepping back and we're moving into appointing the non-executive directors. And we have some recommendations for those that are in, I think they're undercover at the moment, but they're in confidential, but I have no doubt that they'll be made public soon after. And so we're just appointing those non-executive directors today so that the CEOs that who are currently in those positions can step back from that role.
Thank you. Are there any speakers against? No? Any comments or questions? Councillor Mitchell?
Thank you and apologies if there's an obvious answer to this I've just haven't seen. Greenavate's a great story and the collaboration's an awesome one. There will be financial and environmental benefits, as far as I can tell, that will be quite significant. Just wondering where the community can- just wondering where the community can follow the journey, I'm pretty aware of how it was formed and where it's going, just unaware if there's any information on the website that's there, I think it's a.
Thank you, we have the acting general manager, infrastructure and operations, or sorry, is, so Paula, Paula, thank you.
Yeah, they are in the process of establishing a website for Greenavate to communicate that information, we've just got a bit of caution in what we can release because of the funding agreement, so we're just waiting for the state and federal governments to do the media release, and then we can step up that information a bit more.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bishop.
First, a comment, just to note that, as councillor Mitchell has mentioned, this is, and others have mentioned, this is a very exciting opportunity, waste is a growing theme and matter of significance for everyone in South East Queensland, to have the collaboration amongst three councils for this innovation, to not only to build, manage, operate and oversee, we also, as councils, have a huge say over the inputs through our residents, and I think the transparency for residents and the benefit to everyone in these three councils, it's actually a benefit for all of us, I think it's a really collaborative, cooperative innovation that is great to see in a sector that does have large players. So generally, I want to support and acknowledge the significance of this, I think it is a very innovative, collaborative, cooperative approach, and huge kudos to the team, and also our former CEO, who was a great champion of this particular matter, which is of great significance, my question to, and it may be on notice, because it is referred to in the report, that there are AGMs that will occur, but my question was just about, as I consider everyone to be a stakeholder in South East Queensland, to what degree are those general meetings, annual general meetings going to be held and visible in terms of their commitment to the charter and so forth, is that going to be at all public, do we know, and I can understand that will be a question on notice because of confidentiality around so many matters, but I can follow up offline if that would be easier.
We've only had one AGM, and I'm not aware that that's public, the minutes are public, but happy to take that on notice.
Through you Chair, agreed, there's only been one at the present, once the independent directors are formed, certainly they will then re-establish that meeting structure, I should say, the shareholders, which is the three councils from Ipswich, Logan and Rendles, hold their meetings in public, together with the public report today.
I just asked because of the significance, I think this will be very significant for all residents, and should be more and more important in our future considerations, I know that we will get some insight, but I just thought I'd ask that question, I think to those incoming board members that will be endorsed with our support today, I just wish them all the best, and hope that they appreciate the significance and importance of this matter going forward, and I'm sure they do, thank you.
Thank you councillor Bishop, councillor Boglari.
I'd just like to endorse some of the comments that have just been said by councillor Mitchell and councillor Bishop, one of my first workshops when I joined council was on the issue that waste was going to give councils in South East Queensland, and I was surprised back then, and I really had my eyes opened, and for more than a decade, I think, a collaborative approach has been spoken about, and I believe that Paula has been on the journey most of that way, so kudos to you Paula, because I think there's been more wriggling in this one than worms in a worm farm, with councillors coming, councils coming and going, and to get to this point, I just think a bottle of champagne should be popped, because this is such a great savings and a reduction in a huge challenge for us, so thank you to the officers, I really appreciate this work.
Thank you very much councillor Boglari. Any other questions or comments, councillor Mackenzie, would you like to sum up?
No, thank you, mayor.
Thank you, I now put the motion, those in favour, that's councillors Mitchell, councillor Hewlett, councillor Hewlett, councillor Rendles, Talty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself, seeking an audio councillor Boglari.
Aye.
It's confirmation of affirmation, noting that councillor Goley is absent, that motion is carried. Moving to agenda item number seventeen, I've not been, which is notices of intention to repeal or amend resolutions, I've not been advised of any for this meeting, agenda item number eighteen, notices of motion, I've not been advised of any notices of motion from councillors. Agenda item number nineteen, urgent business, I'm not aware of any urgent business. Which now takes us to agenda item number twenty, which is confidential items, so we are now moving, sorry, in accordance with section two hundred and fifty-four J of Local Government Regulation twenty twelve, to discuss the matters listed in the agenda, we must move into closed session, can I have a mover and second, moved by councillor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Bishop, I now put the motion, those in favour, councillors Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Talty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself, seeking an audio, councillor Boglari.
Aye.
Confirmation of, in the affirmative, noting that councillor Goley is absent, that
Now, councillor Hughes, just before we go back, councillor Hughes will have to be out for the first meeting.
Microphone.
All right, welcome back everybody and we're moving back into our open session. Can I please have a mover and seconder that we move out of confidential and the meeting proceedings resume? Thank you, moved by councillor Colley, seconded by councillor Tolty. Put that motion. Those in favour, councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself, seeking an indication from you councillor Boglari? That's an affirmative. Thank you. And taking note that councillor Golei is absent, that motion is carried. We now move on to agenda item number 20.1, which is round one, sponsorship programme, applications for major sponsorship. And I'll ask at this time councillor Hughes if you would like to leave the room. All right. May I have a mover and seconder for that motion, moved by councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Colley? Ah, sorry. That is an amended... Just give me a second while I confer. So this is, this is the, the current motion before us, as, as discussed. So you can read the motion on screen. So we have a move, moved by councillor Mitchell, seconded by councillor Colley. I now put the motion. Those in favour?
Excuse me, before we vote, as I can't see the screen, is this the officer's recommendation?
Sorry, the motion now reads councillor Boglari, that council resolves as follows. Number one, to approve point A, application S2425-r1-014 for $15,000 of sponsorship funding. Point B, or subsection B, application, same number, sorry, application number S2425-r1-023 for $25,000 of sponsorship funding. And then point two remains the same.
Exactly.
No problem. All right, now now put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Colley, myself, councillor Boglari?
Aye.
Sorry?
Aye.
Aye, aye, that's an affirmative. Counts those against councillor Bishop. And noting that councillor Hughes is absent from the room and councillor Golei is also absent. That motion is... Sorry councillor Hughes, councillor Golei, that motion is now carried.
Any more?
Yeah, we're just waiting for councillor Hughes to come back into the room. Thank you. Moving to agenda item number 20.2, which is the local government infrastructure plan, major amendment and netserv plan amendment. Do I have a mover for the officer's recommendation? Moved by councillor Hewlett, seconded by councillor Mackenzie. I put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, myself. Counts, those against?
Oh no, I was...
Sorry, councillor Boglari, sorry, online? That's an affirmative. Those against? Councillor Bishop. And I note that councillor Gole is absent, that motion is carried.
May, can I just ask a quick question? Councillor Boglari should be able to see the screen now? Is that, is she...
Councillor Boglari, can I just double check? Are you able to see the screen now?
Okay, so I've actually come in on my phone so that I get good audio and I then can have my agenda item on my laptop. So when I'm looking at the chambers, the screen is very small, that's all. And I can't see, I can't read the screen off the phone. So I'm, I'm seeing the chambers, thank you councillor Tolty, I just can't see the actual screen.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I thought, is, is it not a split screen where you can see both the speaker and the words?
Okay, she's, she's, she's teamsing from, from her, she's on Teams on her phone. So you were able to make reference now to 20.3 councillor Boglari, you can see the officer's recommendation?
It's just the same.
Yeah, it's unchanged.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, item, agenda item number 20.3, significant contracting plan asphalt and associated works. Can I have a mover and seconder for the officer's recommendation? Thank you councillor Bishop and councillor Tolty. I put the motion. Those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop, myself. And an indication councillor Boglari?
Aye.
That's an affirmative. And I note that councillor Gole is absent, that motion is carried. And now just returning to agenda item number 15.1, which was options to manage bushfire risk on properties with vegetation protected by covenant or condition, building envelopes in brackets. Can I have, we now have the amended...
Excuse me, sorry, excuse me Chair, do we not have to take it off the table? I move to take it off the table.
All right, so moving, a motion to move the item back into play, back off the table, moved by councillor Mackenzie, seconded by councillor Bishop. Those in favour? Councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop and myself. Councillor Boglari, an indication?
Aye.
That's an affirmative, noting that councillor Gole is away, that motion is carried. So we now, so now we are back to the motion before us. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Moved by councillor Tolty, seconded by councillor Mackenzie. I now put the motion, those in...
I can speak to that one, it's not confidential, may?
Yes.
You, okay. So I'd like to very much thank the officers. There's been a lot of work, not just this week or in the last couple of months, but over a number of years to try to find a way to address these concerns. This is about addressing, addressing a very serious issue of safety in an area of our city, which is mapped among the highest risk for fire, wildfire in the state. We are under mapping which gives us the highest risk level and we have properties that have covenants and building envelopes which bring them into conflict with the overriding state legislation, which allows for the, as a right, protection of their properties in those high fire danger areas. So what we're doing here is we're putting forward a policy which allows clarity for the community, for the officers and everyone to be able to look to address that risk in a simple, direct way. There was recently a Royal Commission in relation to fire management and the conflicts that fire management and vegetation management have in multiple levels of legislation and regulation at multiple levels of government. And it is incumbent upon all governments to be able to provide guidance and clear, simple, understandable rules for people that serve the interests of everyone in the community and in particular for safety. And that is what we're seeking to do here. So I recommend it to councillors, thank you.
Thank you councillor Tolty. Any speakers against? If I can, okay. Any, any others? We're all good. Any questions councillor Bishop?
Yeah, just noting that the, this particular item relates to covenants in areas that have SPP bushfire hazard mapping identified. I just want to, for clarity, just acknowledge that a change away from covenants, which have been a very important part of protections for the city, that is there any concern that covenants more generally, my first question is, could be up for review in this regard? I know that it's related specifically to the second layer of mapping, but I just want to make sure that that's clear. And the second question is, is there a potential concern that large lots over 4,000 square metres that might be subject to covenants where the perception from residents who may be on different sized lots adjoining, there could be an expectation from those other residents that this clearing work does need to happen in reverse to manage bushfire risk for associated properties that could put a burden on those landowners. I just wonder if that's a consideration that's been thought through? For adjoining, for, for people to come to that landowner and say, we request for you to do this on your lot and therefore incur the costs associated with that. So...
Thank you acting general manager.
Thank you, may. So through you to councillor Bishop. On the first question of covenants more broadly, this matter is quite narrow. This is simply related to managing bushfire risk where subject to covenants. The covenants will still be in place and will still be in place for other purposes. So it really is just for bushfire management. On the second question, this will bring those properties covered by covenants and building envelopes into line with the provisions that apply more broadly across the city under the state's planning regulation. And the issue of neighbour interactions, for want of a better term, will be the same now on these properties as for elsewhere across the city. So we would certainly encourage neighbours to have those conversations to manage bushfire risk collectively.
I just, I just wonder if there could be an unforeseen issue in terms of expectations around managing this that, that could raise concerns down the track that, yeah, may be of significance. I think we'll have to wait and see. Thank you.
That is a comment. Thank you councillor Bishop. Councillor Boglari, you've got your hand up.
Oh, I just wanted to point out that the motion actually identifies that we've taken into account the risks here to human life and infrastructure and how these risks actually change depending on the variables of the actual location, which is the reasoning why we have the change in constraints on lot sizes in urban and rural areas. So I think a lot of decisions have come, a lot of thoughts and opinions have been put into this changed motion, but I just wanted to reassure the public that we have taken into account all the risks.
Thank you councillor Tolty. All right, are there any other, any other comments, questions? Councillor Tolty, would you like to sum up?
Yes, just for, for councillors in regard to the matter conflated, confusing but raised. In an event that a property is presenting a significant danger to the local area because of a fire hazard, the commissioner has the power through the Act to direct that a fire management plan be done and enacted. And so that is where the power for that sits. It's not a risk to council. Thank you. And please support the change for safety of our community.
Thank you. All right, now put the motion. Those in favour? It's councillor Mitchell, Hewlett, Rendles, Tolty, Mackenzie, Hughes, Colley, Bishop, myself and councillor Boglari online?
Aye.
That's an affirmative, noting that councillor Gole is absent, the motion is carried. All right, councillors, please ensure your attendance has been logged in diligent boards, although I think everyone's up to date. That looks great. I now declare, actually did before I do that, given the contentious issues that we dealt with today, I too just want to say my thanks to everyone. Thank you for your input. Thank you to staff. Once again, awesome job. Well done everyone. I now declare the meeting closed at 1:43pm.